Good evening. Welcome to the vote for Webster Board meeting for November 23rd, 2021. And if you would all stand please for the pleasure of the meeting. Anna, would you lead us please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You seated? We are going to open up this evening with public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear what you have to say.
One at a time, please.
Okay, if there is no one that would like to address the board, then we will move on to, move to our scheduled agenda. Our public hearing is scheduled for 7:15, so we will hold off on that until 7:15. So we will move to our scheduled agenda at this time, and our first item on it is a resolution to approve the minutes from the November 9th, 2021 meeting. If you would put those over, and if you have, you know, additions or corrections, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
All right, next we have a resolution to approve the claims and warrants. Take a look at that. If you have any comments or questions.
I'm just a new in science here.
Hi everyone. Heather, I don't remember if we talked about this before, LMT, were we gonna shop them a little bit? They're a little high, or anything?
Yes, we were, but we haven't really found anybody comparable after we, the initial one, they wouldn't really, Don wasn't really happy with their kind of agreement, and he had a good point, so we really haven't found anybody else that would be able to do it yet. We're working on it though.
Thank you.
No problem.
Jake, I have a question. What are the, the vote to build for cost road highway supply for no parking? We need ones of some kind?
Yes, we put up, um, Foster Drive, the entire east side of Foster Drive, it's no parking. The old ones were put up, and they were more than 200 feet apart, and we've had a pretty consistent parking issue over there. So before we start for enforcement, we want to make sure that we had ours, we need, I think there's seven signs there. And there's some also for less mainstream.
I have a question, but I don't want to put Marsha on the spot, but we need to,
I don't do it anyway.
We need to waste some time before 7:15. So the retirement contribution, is that more or less than last year, if you recall?
It's more.
It's more, even with the way the stock market's been performing. Why is that?
And that's only the general month's share.
Wow, I would guess it would have been left, who would like?
Yes, you'd think.
Yeah, see, there's another 45,000 on the store button.
Yeah. Ouch.
Yeah.
What's the, I have a question. What's the Winchester optical company eye care? For $130 on, I think it's the third page.
Those are safety glasses. $130 would indicate they're progressive or bifocal lenses. It's a contractual item. I'm not sure if it occurs regularly, it's a contractual thing.
Jake, how much does this new case load or cost?
About $160,000.
Okay. No questions.
Daryl, when you're done going through that, if you want, we can go over this report while we got time.
Yeah, Don, I didn't answer your question. I was reading the paper that certificate dinners costing either $1.47 or 17. I forgot where the desk or whatever, I can read it back here if you need, but more this year. Just generally, I think.
If nobody has any other questions, I'll adjoint motion to approve the claims and warrants.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey? Oh, sorry. Trustee Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
We have a bit of time here before we have opening to our public hearings, so I think at this time we will move to ask our code enforcement officer if he would explain and go over his report. Aaron?
Absolutely. Good, thanks, sir. We had a total of 12 permits for October. For violations, complaints, we had 30 plus. To be honest, it's been hard to keep track because we had so many coming in. Most of them had to do with Country Manor. We had a total of one certificate of occupancy, 44 issues compliance, certificates of compliance, which equals 45 permits that I closed out for the month of October. We had to finish working on some stormwater management program. That's the one that Jake and I were doing with DC in the previous audit that we have. Still working diligently on permits, old permits. Brittany Woods subdivision, they're continuing work, and still have some issues going on there as well that I've explained the last couple of months. And they are working on it. They started the remodel of where the structural fire was, and the new basement wall that collapsed, that's up. Some inspections and work is going on with that. Greenbrier, they've got the new road in, part of the new road, so they're still hoping to get a couple of the foundations in for that before the end of the year. Country Manor, as described, you have multiple issues, multiple violations. It's been extremely time consuming. I've been working with several agencies, including Warner County Health Department, and in contact with Warner County DA's office, as well as the State Attorney General's office. It's a pretty in-depth process for that one. Current owner has contacted me and has been working on clearing up some of the issues. And as of right now, it sounds like the new owner will be taking over on Monday. So that's, that's good news. That's good news. I did have a meeting with the new owners today.
Do you know who they are?
Um, they're still, I do know who they are. Like I said, I met with them physically today, and they're gonna hit the ground running.
They don't want, they don't want generally to announce until?
No, not yet, until it's closed. There's a disclosure. So we can't talk to them. But they are local, a local company, so that's fantastic. And they've explained how much money they have set aside for this project alone, and it's gonna be good for the, good for the village, good for Country Manor, and all the residents living down there. So I need you to get that going and, and stuff. I've also had a lot of success from violation notices. I've sent out to other residents for, you know, cars and lawns and stuff like that. A few others we're still working on, so. That is all I have.
I missed the last meeting. Did you update us on the church?
I did, but I actually, that's a good question, a good thing. I left that on the list, my apologies. We did meet with the, they hired a new structural engineer. I made a good meeting with them. We were able to open up the west end, so Maria's and, you know, some of the other businesses are back open. It's still ongoing with the actual old church, the original church part, and that's still structurally unsound, so they just still close. Will be until they get several repairs done and a new structural engineer report, and they're, they're working on, working on that. But it's gonna be, it's gonna be wild, I think.
Structural damage, is there?
When he went and did some roofing repairs years ago, you know, you didn't even know what it was, he built his own trusses, I guess?
I wasn't fresh.
Yeah, I mean, he did, he did very well. But there's some stuff that has to be done with that structurally still. But it, the way it's kind of set up right now, it could, you know, some stuff could collapse without some proper shoring and proper attachments, so.
Is, is the sidewalk reopened in front again?
Sidewalk is back open. Yep, structural engineer said it is safe enough to have the sidewalk open.
You don't think the front wall's gonna tip over?
Nope, nope. It's a, it's a couple of feet thick, come to find out, and some of the, some of the structural ties are still there, and that's what, you know, that's what we worry about. The structural engineer confirmed that it is safe, so.
And I assume you did that via writing, right?
Yes, we do have, we do have a file. How do you have a file for that? Yes.
I'm sure done, is it?
Yeah.
I just noticed the cones were gone.
Yeah, that's why I asked.
Yeah.
It's not there anymore.
Yeah, luckily the businesses, you know, from when we had the whole building closed down, luckily all the businesses happened to be closed the same amount of time, so it worked out well. And the businesses seem to have lost any actual time, so.
Thank you. It seems like you haven't been doing anything.
No, no, I don't.
So you all know, the current owners, owner of Country Manors, they're in New Jersey, so it's, it'll be much better than owners of local.
Who are the new owners, do you know yet?
We can't say.
Not yet.
Monday?
Monday. Yeah, Monday they're signing the papers, as of right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I have a question. I'm Greenbrier, driven by there for the first time.
Yeah.
Really clear-cut, beautiful place. Their plans, I didn't look at them in great depth, but their plans do call for re-planting, I guess.
Yeah, they have some, they have some new plantings in there. It'll all be done in phases, I believe. Is it four phases altogether? There's four phases altogether, spread out over the next several years. But as they, as they call it, they will be doing some plantings.
How deep is their retention plan on the east end?
Deep.
Are those ponds that are gonna go in there?
No, that's just where the stakes are for the existing elevations, so I have to keep them in there for right now.
So it looks like about 15, 18?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty impressive.
There are a lot of condos here.
Yeah, yeah, that was impressive to watch them get the rock out of there, because they're processing. They're still doing, they're still working on the pond.
As I recall, that pond is oversized for just their crops.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. So they should help drainage of the whole area of state road.
Yeah, and they have a couple others, I think two or three other smaller ponds that are there as well besides that large one. So yeah, they, they have, they have a lot of drainage, and so should help the, the whole area, which is good.
Daryl, you could look at the plan, the site plan that was approved that Garrett's got, because my recollection is there are gonna be some, I think, pine trees along state road.
Along state road, yep, correct.
You know, to help, you know, kind of shield the neighbors across the street.
Then I was looking just within the, like, the roadway and the buildings themselves, if there would be.
Yeah, yeah, there'll probably be plantings up there, new strong trees. And I know I mentioned in the past, real quick, we're gonna be working on some, some changes to the code. The one, first one that's gonna be coming up fairly soon is gonna be the, work hours from, it's currently 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. We're gonna be adjusting that for your approval for 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Because 8:00 AM is a pretty late start for, especially for construction companies, and even, you know, refuse companies, they at least start well before that. So we've got to do some adjustments, but we'll.
As part of the noiser.
Noiser, thank you. So that'll be one of the.
That would move back an hour, an hour earlier.
Yep, and that's consistent with.
At nighttime, that internal would also move back.
Right, yep, it'd be instead of 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, it'd be 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. So. Hey, John?
Aye.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Eric. All right, it is past 7:15, so I will entertain a vote to open the public hearing on proposed local law number one of 2021 titled "Opting Out of Licensing and Establishment of Retail Cannabis Dispensary and/or On-Site Cannabis Consumption Establishments Within the Incorporated Village of Webster."
Make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
The floor is open. For anyone who would like to address the board regarding this local law proposal.
Just in case you get on hand, so.
They got a warrant, they're feeling kind of crazy.
Wait, leave out the back door.
Well, it didn't seem like anyone wants to address this proposed local law. If not, then I will close, or at least ask for a vote to close this public hearing on proposed local law number one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Buckey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Is there any comment from the board? On our agenda, we do have a resolution to adopt the proposed local law number one of 2021, which I just read and read again. But if anybody in the board would like to discuss this or would prefer to wait for maybe, you know, the two weeks or until the first week of December, that would be up to you, whether you would want to do that or not. Otherwise, I'm not against voting on it since there is no one who has spoke regarding it.
What's the town doing? Do we know?
The town, as far as I know, is looking to address this, I think it's December 2nd.
I don't understand why we push it out a couple of weeks if.
I think we should find out what the town is doing.
Yeah, I.
And my question is, what would be the anticipated revenue? Any ideas on this, or if?
Did you read the thing? I, I mean, I read the, the white sheet, and it's pretty good revenue if we opt in.
Do you know the number was, or do you know roughly?
In the town opt-in. And then we can receive revenue from the town and the county, I think.
You would only receive revenue if?
If, if there was a shop in the village. Correct.
You wouldn't just receive it because the town opts in and they add a shop.
Is that true? Yes, that's true.
That is true.
I didn't know you did.
It is that way. That's not displayed that way.
I don't too.
All right, so they opt in, you get some. If not, it's just the village, you have to have it in the village alone.
We have the act, if we opt out now, we can opt in later.
Correct.
Yeah, so nobody really knows what the revenue estimates are gonna be because the state is only in the beginning stages of coming up with the regulations themselves, so. You know, so as you said, it's, you can always opt back in at any time later, if you think, you know.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against it, to be honest with you. I would like this, you know, see the revenue, make sure it's in the locations it needs to be. I mean, you're talking about a village that has multiple bars, you know, you have a cigar shop, you have walk-in devices everywhere. This, you know, this is not something someone runs in and buys and runs out to the parking lot and starts, you know, going crazy. If it's, if it's an illegal substance, people are buying it, they're gonna, people are gonna drive through your town, they're gonna use it in your town, whether they get it here or not. It doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, it could still go right on the street, but it's.
Right, it's out there.
Right, it's over.
That's why I don't.
Nothing against it anymore.
I'm trying to understand the reason to say no to it. What are the reasons? It's not gonna, you know, yeah, you're not gonna put one next to the school, you know, so obviously, if you read it, I think there is stipulations about how far it could be, and all those things, but I, I don't know. I think, I'm not opposed to it.
Well, it has nothing to do with regulating the use of marijuana per se.
Right.
It's still legal in the village of Webster.
Correct.
Whether you opt out.
That's my point.
Someone can basically walk down the street, smoke a joint, and there's nothing you can do about it.
Right.
So.
So why, that's, like, doesn't make sense.
So, so the question is, yeah, so the question is, is there going to be perceived need for a retail dispensary within the village of Webster that someone's gonna apply for the license and go through all that? And that, who knows at this point, you know? And I suppose if someone contacts the village in the future and requires about it, at that point, you can decide, well, let's opt in if we think the revenue is gonna be worthwhile. Or you can still.
Right, or they.
Yeah, it's not gonna be worth it.
They could know you already opted out and just decided to go to another village or town, so.
Well, I think, the person could put it in, you know, March Pizzeria, right over the town line, right in the village way. Sell it there, and the village would get zero revenue.
Right.
It's, a lot of people would probably compare that to alcohol sales within the village too, you know, I mean, if it, if it's used reasonably, just like alcohol, how many people abuse it, you know, I mean?
It's pretty much like a, it's like McDonald's.
It is, it is.
It's like fruit snacks that have, just look up the fruit snack, what's a fruit snack you probably shouldn't give to your kid, so you can go on.
You can't, I mean, unfortunately, there's nobody here to speak about it by themselves, but I'm surprised that nobody's here to question the board. Well, since, since they allow you to, it allows the village to opt in whenever you want, it can't hurt to opt out at this point, you know, until, and then, like I said, if there's, if in the future, you know, someone comes to the village and says, I want to apply for a license, I want to do the retail sales, at that point, you can, you know, try to figure out, well, what's the expected revenue is gonna be, what's our share 4% gonna be, and, and you have a more opportunity to regulate it at that point than if you did nothing now. Because you got more, more, more leverage. Because unless you opt back in, they can't do anything. If you say, yeah, we'll opt back in, if you do A, B, C, you know.
Yeah, if you opt in now or opt in later, I think it's.
Yes.
I mean, that's a good point, seeing what the town does too.
Yeah.
It wasn't always me guys, we can be oblivious.
What's everybody else doing? It gets, we need to find out what they're doing.
Well, yeah, I think that there are a number of, number of villages that are looking to opt out.
Yes.
Are looking to or have.
Don't have to be like everybody else, Daryl.
Should you talk to them? Who should I talk to?
East Rides, Daryl.
Everybody answered our email, and I don't remember if it was, did you email the other mayors? I can't remember.
So everybody answered, but we don't remember.
It wasn't my phone call. They, they, I think the only ones that were saying they weren't gonna be, were Honeyway Falls, I wanna say. I CC'd you in on it, I don't.
Hilton, I thought Hilton was doing it.
I have to look, I'm sorry, I didn't remember.
Did they give any reasons why, or?
Clerk probably wouldn't, it's not really their, you know, decision, so.
Oh, you're saying yea or nay type of thing?
Yeah.
We'll have, I suppose, probably be appointed in December, the meeting.
I think if, if there was a shop and our village has sold it, the price that they're asking for it for weed is probably much higher than what they pay on the street, I guess.
I was sitting out the suit.
And so you're gonna see users going to the street rather than paying a higher price, anyway.
Somebody uses it regardless of town has it.
Or they can go there on.
It's not like the residents of village, the village or the town are gonna stop using it if they don't have a, a place to purchase it in town. It's, or they'll go to Henrietta and come back and have fun with it in Webster, that's.
They're gonna use it, it's out there.
Everyone's there. So have the regulations, get the revenue. I don't think, I don't understand, I don't like, I don't know if it's much different than what you said to alcohol, it's not really much different.
I think alcohol is worse.
No, don't use it, never use it, but, so I can't say, yeah, well, you can say what it, whatever, but, you know, people use it for household reasons, same thing as alcohol. Alcohol is just a thing, you know?
Yes.
I think it's worse.
Could be worse.
Well, I personally would like to have the full board to know that.
Playing strategic, are we?
Or you got till December 31st, so.
Yeah, so, like, two weeks.
When is the town going to discussing?
December 2nd, I believe, if there, if there's a shop.
It's, you guys have had your emails for like a month, so there's not any more facts you're really gonna get, it's already there. All right.
Oh, I mean, personally, I would agree. If you're gonna wait for it to see what the town is going to do, I have no problem with that. But we can, it has to be voted on prior to December 31st.
Our decision is, it shouldn't make any difference.
I'd say we table it. Till we find out what the town's. They'll find out with the town. Well, when's the town meeting, uh?
The second.
December second. Our next meeting, what, the sixth?
The ninth. Correct, that, the next meeting happened the ninth.
Yes.
We're having a workshop, a combination of workshop and prior.
That was his idea. That was his idea.
So, move, the motion to table, because you guys are in a vote, it's why we're just sitting there in silence.
Okay, what's your message? Yeah. It's waiting to see if they... You can vote and say yay or nay.
Can you table the public come back? Or is that option done?
No, we can come back.
No, he's asking if, if you, it'd be another hearing though.
Hearing is fine.
You're allowed to come to the podium and speak for sure, um, on our next meeting and all of such and such.
Sure. If you approve it, can you then take it back yearly?
Can you take it back yearly?
Yeah. Can you say it's not, we're not gonna have it?
You can rescind a local law anytime.
How difficult is that?
Pardon?
How difficult is that?
It's the same process, it's another local law to rescind this one. So, it's subject to a public hearing. And, but an adpermissive referendum like this, but there would be a public hearing the same. But it's not done anywhere. Once you opt in, you can't opt out again. You can't keep going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
That was my question.
You're, you're either...
No, it's a good question.
You're, you're apt, you're apt out, and then you're apt out forever, or if you opt in, that's forever too.
So, you mentioned the fact of leverage, I think, I think that's a good tactic to use. Though you may be able to order pizza with ganja, right? Um, if they open it up in March, right?
They can't, they can't open it up in March, they can't sell food like that.
A sheet pizza, you can't get it half and half or something? Half mushrooms, half ganja?
What kind of mushrooms are we...
Magic mushrooms.
The bacon that's supplied.
But, you know, like, for example, you know, in the state law, there's, there's prohibitions that, that a dispensary and or onsite consumption can't be within, I forget where it is, two hundred feet or meters of a church or a school or whatever. But that doesn't mean you can't, you know, through zoning, you can't also restrict it, you know, to other, like, just neighborhood business. Maybe you don't want one right on Main Street, you know? So, you could, you have, if you opt out, you got, that's the more leverage, because if you opt back in, you could, at that point, perhaps look at the zoning and where if you're gonna give one of these establishments. You know, obviously, you can't do it in a residential area, but of the, the commercial neighborhood business, industrial or central business, you know, it doesn't have to be all three, you can perhaps just put it in one of them. Now, they gotta go with Xerox or something, you know, or... But it just gives you more time to look into things like that if you opt out now. And again, if there's a need later, perhaps you can tweak the zoning code to decide where, in fact, you're gonna allow it where you want it.
And one of the things that has been proposed or has been put forth by the, um, one of the hominids, I guess, of the establishment now in Scottsdale that is producing right now, um, C D D. They're ramping up, you know, you know, something new here. But, um, they were seemingly putting pressure, they went to the town and then putting a lot of pressure just in terms of their presentation that it, you know, you should get in on it now, get on it now, because you don't know if you'll be able to do it again if you don't get in on it now, right? I mean, if we were to say you can't have a place that sells alcohol in the town, if you don't get in on it right now, you'll never be able to have a place that sells alcohol. I think you're, that's wrong. If this is legal and at some particular point we opt in, there's going to be someone who would come here to want to distribute in the Webster area. But right now, maybe we don't have enough information, we haven't looked at where it is specifically. We would like to have anything that comes in, and we need to do that, you know, we need to look. And we need to decide if we're, if, how we limit it, I guess, you'd say.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's as hard as you think it is in the local. Jake's got us something down there.
I just have a question, I, as I really don't know, is there a limit, just made part of the consideration, is there a limit to the number of dispensaries or onsite consumption licenses that will be granted? In a certain area or in a certain...
At one time, I thought that there was going to be in terms of the state getting them out.
Yeah.
But I don't know if that's true.
Yeah, but...
And I haven't heard, and did that, the onset of following which prohibition was done, and, you know, they began the license establishments that would sell alcohol and so on, did they limit that? Did it change over time anymore?
I, I don't know the answer to it. I haven't read the entire new cannabis law. It's a whole new...
You may wanna get familiar with it.
Well, I'm not so sure, I, I don't think it's that specific. I think that's why they've been waiting for this cannabis control board, et cetera. So, I don't think they've gotten down to the nitty gritty of deciding how many licenses per geographic area, you know, there. I just, that might speak to the, you know, the, the mayor was talking about somebody, you know, we gotta act now or you can't get in now. Because they, they're only allowed four in one of our counties. If you opt out, that might make a difference. If you wanna opt in later, it might be a mood issue, you know, if there's only four and they're already... I don't, I don't think the law is that specific, and the law is filled with things to try to encourage minority, black-owned businesses to get these licenses because that's the population that's been most adversely affected by marijuana being illegal all these years. Or so, that's what the legislation says in the legislature today. So, I don't think they, you know, I, I don't think there's a, a limit at this point.
Good talk, Bill Jake.
You know, it's not like the, well, even, they didn't even do it with the casino, well, the casino stuff, they, they said there's only gonna be so many of them, but I don't think they're that far along to, to figure any of this out. Which is just another reason to opt out and opt in later after the state's, you know, got its act together. Because it, because the way they did it, you only have till December thirty-first to opt out.
Where'd that go?
Huh?
Do you want me, do you want me to forward the responses I got from the other villages?
No, I think you gotta ask for a motion. Oh, I was going into the line next to you.
She's gonna, she's gonna forward the responses from the other villages, yes.
You guys always ask what the other villages wanted to.
Well, some of them aren't, yes. I don't care what the other villages do, we gotta be innovative and creative, Heather.
But they've been creative, I would say, man.
So, no, you don't want to...
Alright, we're gonna, we're gonna...
So, I'll ask for a motion to, um, table this item until the next meeting.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Quickie, quickie. Trustee Bucking?
Aye.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Bower?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion down.
In this proposed law, with previous things where we said we wouldn't vote on something that, that we had a discussion.
That's also a good point.
That's true.
That's better than Judy not being here using that excuse, so that's good. Call her as soon as I know.
Call her, too. She's wife, isn't she?
Alright. So... Moving on, done? Anything more?
I did get an email from the town attorney saying with respect to the pay and the invoice we received from the town for the village's contribution to the town's phase one sewer improvement project that, that he wasn't ignoring me. He's just been waiting to hit a time with the supervisor so that they can discuss the email that I sent to the town attorney. And I guess with, with Barry Dean coming off the town board, and I talked to Tom Flaherty about this, there is, there's a bunch of time-sensitive things that, other things that, that he would like to give the town board decide on before Barry leaves because he's been involved in it, rather than having Jimmy Wynn have to get up to speed and push everything off even further, so, so I don't think this is on their front burner rate at the moment, even though he wanted the bill paid by the end of the, end of December. But it's good I got an email, that they, they acknowledged, you know...
There's some dialogue.
Right, right.
Uh, Heather?
Nope, I don't think so.
Jay?
Yes, I just wanna, you know, annual reminders about leaves and salting. Leaves, seems like a lot of people are trying to help us out, put the leaves out into the gutters.
I've seen some out in the streets.
Yes, and in the streets, it's not necessary, and they, it's kinda counterproductive because it help, makes it harder to pick up the leaves when they're, when they're wet, so leave them up on the grass. Uh, you know, they go by and see us moving them out into the street to pick them up, but they should be on the grass, um, and we can move them, they pick them right up, and if they sit in the gutter, it really, it actually slows things down, so makes it really difficult to, to get them up, so. Um, their last leaf pickup right now is scheduled weather permitting for December sixth, that week of December sixth. Uh, we're gonna update our website next week. The, uh, salting, again, with the, with the salting, we use a sensible salting model. We, um, use really, you know, try to use salt as, as little as we can because it all goes down, you know, it all ends up in the, you know, ditches and creeks and out into the lake, so we try to...
Just get my own.
Yeah, we just, that's what we do, we do hills and intersections and curves really, um, and then rely on people to recognize the white stuff as snow and drive slow in between. I mean, we're all side streets, thirty miles an hour is the max speed limit, um, so this, it's winter, drive carefully, you live in Upstate New York.
Is that really the term or is that your term?
No, it's actually, I suppose, oh, it's a, it's a real thing. It's not only mine too, but rather than clear road and see, we, we use that, so... And just an update, we had a, Marcia and I, I had a telephone conference today with B P D, which is regarding, Pete Donaghy and the financial advisors there, either the...
Yeah.
...village, and Lobella, making sure they're getting everything wrapped up. Everything should be to the E F C tomorrow, um, but they were missing just a few little pieces left, uh, pieces of the puzzle for that regarding the sewer project. Uh, the ready grant, um, that should be on really soon for, um, hopefully the next meeting, we'll get some information on it so we can go to bed on that for the water wells. So, we're looking at trying to maintain the schedule we had before, um, I guess the latest schedule where it's kinda slated for mobilization in March, um, March or April, but obviously, the weather's gonna dictate some of that as well. And I think that's it, and, and the only other thing, just the discussion on the new cannabis law, remind you, you know, be nice, maybe if we have a workshop coming up to look at our policies, you know, we're out, right now, it'd be legal anywhere where smoking, outdoors, anywhere where smoking's allowed, uh, so maybe we can look at our code, because it stinks. I don't know if I'm dysphoric or sensitive to it, but it stinks, so might be nice to maybe address, you know, public areas, you know, maybe smoking's not allowed in the parks, um, it shouldn't be.
I like where you're going with this, because that could solve Darryl and Carl's concerns. We'll address that all at once, where it can be used around in the public areas of the village.
Well, yeah, for it's a great nuisance in the public area, you know, but trips over into the right way, but if, you know, someone living out on Berry Drive, I'd swear you'd smell it right now, so it's, uh, it's...
I like where you're going, Jake.
So, maybe it's something to address, something to put on a workshop, if, if this is a connect, a thought that they had, so, I think that's...
Jake, will you let me know about the ready, like what I have to do? Will they send...
So, you could be ready?
For the bigs, like what I should...
Yeah, yeah, we'll probably get a list from, if not even that, um, so we gotta try, I'm gonna try to put it in next week and...
Okay.
Uh, they just, they just got the approval from the D C and things like that, you know, so...
Okay.
Alright.
I would mention that our next, uh, village board workshop is going to be on Tuesday, November thirtieth. At, um...
No, that's canceled, that's why it's...
It will be at six fifteen, I believe, on the ninth of December, is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Alright, we'll make that change.
We're gonna double header that.
Duo, you, duos.
Yeah, and we'll follow that as close to seven o'clock as possible. And go to recall that for that workshop. Alright, um, I would like to ask for, at this time, a vote to go into executive session. There are two items, one to discuss possible litigation, and second to discuss matters concerning collective bargaining negotiations.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Apolito?
Aye.
Trustee Bower?
Aye.
Trustee Bucking? Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion down.
Yeah, we're gonna, it's just, well, sort of order pile, I don't know.
So, I'm gonna stop the video now.
Thank you.